7:00 PM sharp, or should we jump the gun in just a second?
Wait another 10 seconds.
I want to ball start here.
Okay.
Last act is me. Starter.
Well. Never mind. Our 10-yard penalty.
Okay, you're good.
Oh, that was so funny. Okay. I'd like to thank everybody who's here tonight and also out in Zoomland. I'd like to start the City Council, the City of Escalon meeting on December 19th, 2022. Would you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hagan?
Here.
Councilmember Bellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Crummick?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Swift?
Here.
And Mayor Alves is absent, excused.
Okay. Let's go ahead and start with the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are acted upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration.
I'd make a motion to accept consent calendar as stated in the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion's been moved and seconded to accept the consent calendar as stated in the agenda. I'd imagine there'd be no debate on that motion, so let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion to accept the consent calendar is approved, four to zero. Staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Before you, we have the treasurer's report, the police department report, animal control, recreation department, development services, building department, water department, and wastewater treatment plant reports for November. And then we also have our public works reports for both October and November.
Okay.
If you have any questions on any of those reports, all of the department heads are here to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, do we have any questions before I ask for any addendums from anybody from the staff?
Well, I had one question maybe for Justin, for Public Works. It was brought to my attention as far as like the potential, something that obviously the council will have to talk about too, but traffic in front of dent, excuse me. The citizens had talked about potentially wanting maybe lighting on the crosswalk because of a few dangerous, I guess, situations that occurred during school time. So I don't know if that's something that we'd want to discuss or not, but...
We definitely, I can definitely look into what it'd take. Superintendent John Lyle and I, we actually met a couple of weeks ago and did some more red curbing and made a few adjustments. We're going to, it's going to be a small adjustment, but we definitely are working together to see if we can do something for their annihilation. We're kind of experiencing the same thing, so... But any input you guys have would be great. But whatever him and I kind of come up with and talk to in the next few weeks, I'll come back and let you know kind of what our thoughts and ideas are at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions to staff? Staff, do you have any addendums?
Does anybody have any updates for their departments? No.
I have one update. A while back, we had NG come in to our town and did some of our work for their water meters and our likes of stuff. Program went great. In that program, the Lions Club was able to take a, I'm not sure what they called it, but a fund to put back into the city. They put that money into Sanchez Park play equipment, which we did receive about a week ago. And between the Lions Club and that park company, the week of the 9th of January, that new stuff will be installed in Sanchez. So we're pretty excited about that. And we appreciate what the Lions Club and NG has done for the city. So just wanted to pass that along.
Very nice. And by the way, and also staff, thank you very much for your involvement in that too, making that entire process happen. That was an integral part of this whole entire enterprise. So thank you very much. So now, is there any, Frank, I believe you've been having, Mayor, I was asking if there's any input from the audience regarding any of the staff communication questions? Or should we move on?
You can always ask for public comment on actually all the items, even including consent. So yeah, it's appropriate.
So let's do that. Let's see if there is any public comment regarding any of the staff communication items. And how about in Zoomland out there? Or actually, go to Meetingland, huh? Okay. So now, we will proceed to matters presented from the audience. The public may address the City Council on any item that is on the agenda at that time that that item is called. The public may also address the City Council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the City of Escalon. Now, each speaker's going to be limited to five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. And so the determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by, made by the mayor, in this case, Mayor Pro Tem, with probably some heavy input from the city attorney. So anyway, would anybody like to speak during matters presented from the audience?
My name is Gabriela Vargas, and I am the homeowner of 1010 First Street. My property is right up against the alley. Essentially, location of my house is the corner of First and James, but it's up to the alley. The next cross street would be Pioneer. It is my understanding, and I may be wrong, that this alley is maintained by the city. It was earlier this year in the spring where my neighborly, or sorry, my elderly neighbor who has dementia was out loose in the neighborhood. He ended up being found in that alleyway. He had fallen into one of the divots that were created. It's mostly dirt and rock. They're very, very large, almost kind of potholes as you would, I would describe them. There are many of them in this alley. Not only did he sustain serious injury, my children and I walk daily in that alley. They have friends that live on the other side of Pioneer and Park. My children and these neighbor kids have fallen also in these holes. And the other day, with the big storm, another elderly neighbor who backs up to the alley was out fixing her fence board that had fallen down while we were walking by. She also slipped in a very big hole. I did bring it to the attention of Dominique. I want to confirm that this is essentially a city responsibility. In addition to this, all of our fence lines are lined with whiskey bottles, trash. In the summertime, the weeds are overrun. I have no problem maintaining the portion that backs up to my fence, but this is a safety issue. And if it belongs to the city, it's going to be on you if someone gets hurt. And so I want to make sure that this is a safe thoroughfare for us, our kids, and our neighbors.
This actually, was actually brought to my attention almost two weeks ago from City Manager Ron, so I'm definitely aware. First time I'm hearing about anybody falling. So it'll definitely go on top of the priority list. We've just been extremely busy, and we have intentions to get there at the end of this week, but might be sooner than that, obviously. But it has been on the list. You did share with me. And it's, my department just hasn't had a chance to get there. But we will be there correcting, cleaning up, and filling the holes there for sure.
I appreciate that. And I have no problem helping. In the meantime, I was just told by a neighbor, and I don't know that this is correct, that I'm not allowed to do anything, clean the weeds, clean the trash, which I think is ridiculous.
I would allow you to, as much as you like.
If you are, if you are getting me, it's dangerous. My children pass through there all day, every day. We take their kids home at night.
Sure.
We're using flashlights. I have fallen. I have no problem getting a shovel and filling the holes.
I would never want you to do that.
Until you get there. I just want to make sure that it's just as much as a priority for the city as it is for those of us who use this alley.
Sure, we'll definitely get it taken care of right away. Thank you.
And it is our, it is our alley.
It is, yes. It is our responsibility.
Making sure.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment at this time under matters presented from the audience? So now, we'll go to a public hearing. And Dominique, would you like to give the background as it is written in the agenda? Or would you like me to go in and run with it?
I can go ahead and do that for you. So the item before you that's set for public hearing tonight was to consider an appeal of the Planning Commissioner's decision regarding a project application 22-768, which is a conditional use permit application for 2307, 2505 Jackson Avenue, which was the request of approval of an addition of six mobile home units with associated parking units to an existing mobile home park. We know this mobile home park previously as Paddock Mobile Manor. This item needed to be placed on the agenda because this is the date that it was originally scheduled. However, with the county certifying the elections, they took a little longer than we had anticipated to certify. And we wanted to make sure that tonight's meeting was ceremonial, you know, on a good note, starting off the new year. And so this item was postponed until the January 17th meeting, which we have talked with the applicant, and they were okay with that. So at this time, we're asking for you to open the public hearing for this item and then continue this item to the January 17th, 2023 City Council meeting.
Okay, well, let's just, let's do just that. And so therefore, I would like to go ahead and open up this public hearing for this item. But again, due to circumstances, we will immediately continue it to the January 20, the January 17th, 2023 meeting. So moving on to administrative matters. Item number six, Dominique.
Thank you. Just get through my under here. The item before us is adopting a resolution reciting the facts of the consolidated general municipal election held on November 8th, 2022, and declaring results in such matters, such other matters as provided by law. So pursuant to the provisions of the Elections Code of the State of California, the City Council must meet to adopt a resolution to declare the results incorporating the statement of results into a resolution that is attached as Exhibit A. After the City Council has declared the results, the newly elected members are to be sworn into their prospective office. The results of the City Council election are as follows. For the full-term candidates, Andrew Thomas Hagan received 1,999 votes. Candidate Jeremy Engel received 1,317 votes. Candidate Melinda Walker received 1,242 votes. Candidate Ed Alves received 1,231 votes. And candidate Peter Crummick received 806 votes. For the short-term position, that was the two-year term, candidate Sean Strowman received 984 votes. Candidate Elsa Sandoval received 794 votes. Candidate Kurt Danzinger received 434 votes. And candidate Sheri Hill received 260 votes. In accordance with the Escalon Municipal Code and pursuant to Section 36516 of the California Government Code, all council members are compensated $300 monthly, totaling $3,600 annually from the city's budget. So at this time, we're looking for council to adopt this resolution, and we will swear in our new members.
I would move on staff's recommendation.
I would second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution reciting the facts of the consolidated general municipal election held on November 8th, 2022. Is there any debate on the motion on the table? So now, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes, four to zero. Okay, now, at this point, I believe we turn the meeting over to Dominique.
Yes.
And your show.
So before we swear in our prospective council members, we would like to give recognition to our council members who will be leaving the council. And so our first one that we would like to recognize is Councilmember Peter Crummick. You are recognized for your dedicated years of public service as a member of Escalon City Council. Your council position started December 17th, 2018, to today, December 19th, 2022. And we thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Did you want to give any comment now? Or do you want to wait until after everybody's?
I don't know, I'm like getting emotional right now. I would. It's my custom to give comments. And I would just say that it's been an honor. I really appreciate the opportunity to serve this community. And I feel like over the last four years, this council has done some good things. I feel like we've, we've tried to invest in the community in the future, in the kids, in the youth, in the rec department as far as developing, you know, different avenues for, for specific items of growth, which has been kind of one of my things, which has been met with some resistance. But we, you know, as far as commercial growth, we've seen some things happening, which in my mind, and the justification was, it goes towards finding new revenues and new ways to put those monies to use back into the community. I would just like to say that I am so happy, I'm so thrilled for the new members that are up here. We have seen a sea change in Escalon over the last four years. We've seen, you know, longstanding members, you know, move on, and we've seen new people come in. And I think that the new people coming in, Jeremy, Sean, Melinda, Andy, you know, along with Dave. It, it, there's a bright future ahead for Escalon. We've got some great people here. I am, I am partly, partially sad to not be a part of the dais, but I am extremely happy for this town, for who the voters have elected. You know, and the last thing I would say as to Ed Alves, when I was a kid, I used to live next to Ed Alves off of Toque Avenue. And I would see him. And I remember seeing him when I was about, I don't know, I had to be about seven or eight. And I remember one of my friends telling me, hey, that's, that's the mayor of Escalon. Ed Alves has been a part of this, leadership of this town that we all care about for a long time. And he deserves a great amount of respect, a great amount of admiration. And I'm sorry he's not here tonight, but I would just like to recognize Ed Alves formally, and I would like to give him a round of applause. And that's all I have. Thank you.
So next up is recognition of Mayor Pro Tem Robert Swift. 12 years on the council, two years as mayor. Yes, that would be great. It is with great honor that you are recognized for 12 dedicated years of public service as a member of the Escalon City Council. Councilmember, starting December 6th, 2010, through today, December 19th, 2022, and then serving in the capacity of mayor from December 7th, 2018 to December 7th of 2020. We thank you for your service very much.
Can I if I say something?
Sure.
I'm going to try. I can't believe you're putting me after Peter and his kind words. Peter, that was beautiful.
How do you follow that, Robert?
Well, the only way you can try to follow it are with Christmas presents. So what I am passing out right now are, how many of you have ever heard of Teddy Roosevelt? This is, I'm speaking specifically to the outgoing end. Just a fair warning. What this is, spoiler alert, these are copies of his, well, or speech, "The Man of the Arena." Andy, you know what I'm talking about. "The Man of the Arena," okay?
Thank you.
Or "The Woman of the Arena." What it is about, it's a short speech about stepping up. Now, listen, everybody has opinions. And councilmembers, you're going to find out. You're going to find out that everybody has opinions. Probably already found that out. Just going to quick, quick looks, you're going to find out just how many opinions are out there. Some are right and awful, some are not knowledgeable, okay? And everywhere in between. Your job is going to be to call the shots. Somebody in government at every level has to make the decisions. That is what you have been placed here to do. Somebody's got to call the shots, no matter what. What the public owes you now is their faith that you will, all the shots, be attentive, be transparent, listen to the public, okay? You know, understand what is a former member of the public. Understand maybe when somebody doesn't find out things right and be ready to explain to them the rest of the situation. Because unlike virtually everybody else in this room, and we have two other former councilmembers that can vouch for this, on many decisions that are made in this town, yeah, you really do know more than everybody else. Some of it almost is by design, the session items, things that are done that you're possible to be talking about. But you really do. Okay, so that's what the public owes you of that faith, that you will make those right decisions. Now, here's what I would suggest for you, the public. That should be the best council member how you can be, as you possibly be. How do you go about doing that? Okay, that's for starting out. There's a conference in January, the U of California City. It's in Sacramento. Go to it. Go to it, go to it. The city has the funds, right, to pay for it. Go to it. Don't watch it on video. Be there. You're going to be connecting with other city managers, other council members from other towns. Develop those relationships so that the next time an issue comes up, that we, that we here feel like, for example, oh, this thing, why are they doing this, why are they doing that? You have a chance to call somebody else. You can know, find out. And how is your town feeling for that? All right? Another piece of advice, just try to learn as much as you possibly can about parliamentary procedure, about working together. There's no, I mean, they all been in the room here. Of course, not all of you have to be in love with each other in order to work together. But you do have to be professional. And you do have to be professional about it and treat each other with kindness and professionalism. And so that's, that's vitally important to be able to do. When you're starting out here, keep in mind, maybe don't go anywhere else now for the first couple of months. This is a big learning curve. And my correct former council members that are nodding, nodding your head, it's a huge learning curve. You're going to be a much more effective council member if you understand how it works, how enterprise funds work, how the relationship between the state and the county and the city works. So many details, so many details to learn. So just, you know, hold tight just a little bit and get the lay of the land first. It's going to serve you so much better in the long run. Also, keep in mind this. Your staff is going to be going through a couple of changes too. All right? Okay, do we have any new finance director? Okay? So Pete, you're going to be, you'll begin to use the things too. Dominique, you'll begin to use the things too. Claire, you've been a huge indispensable help. Okay? Now, it's going to be your show, okay? Nobody lean on, but you're going to do just fine. You're going to do just fine. So keep that in mind too, as you start out this next year. Okay, there's going to be a lot of changes. Let's ease into it and work together. I think, Councilmember Crummick, you hit it dead on. It's time to turn the page. It's going to be a new future. I think it's going to be a bright future. I think the citizens made some great choices. I think you and this town and all of us are going to be great hands for this next council. And I'm excited about the future. Congratulations, everybody, okay? So I think that's it.
And last but not certainly least, was 28 years of service to Edward B. Alves. As you are all aware, he's been on the council for several years in lots of capacities, council member, mayor pro tem, mayor. And so we did want to honor him as well for being a council member from April 19th, 1994, to today, December 19th, 2022, and a four-time mayor in the City of Escalon in 1998 to 2000, 2004 to 2006, 2012 to 2014, and then again from 2020 to 2022. So we thank you, thank him for his service. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it tonight, and so we'll make sure this gets to him. But if we could give him a round of applause, that would be awesome. So with that, we will now move into administering certificates of election and oath of offices to our newly elected council members. Will Mr. Andrew Thomas Hagan, Mr. Jeremy Engel, Ms. Melinda Walker, and Mr. Sean Strowman, please approach the dais. And I'm going to repeat to you with the process. We'll just repeat that. And we'll do it all together, Dominique. I state your name.
I am the voter.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Don't fluff that part up. Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to a brief recess, and we'll reconvene in about 10 to 15 minutes. Everybody enjoy, say hello, take pictures. Thank you. Everybody enjoy, say hello, take pictures, thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
position of mayor. And so because we currently do not have a mayor or a mayor pro tem, I am going to open the nomination process for you. So the nomination process is where each council member gets the option to nominate somebody for the position of mayor. And then with that, we take an individual vote on each one. The first one that receives a majority vote will have the position of mayor. And so with that, I would like to-
May I just add something?
Sure.
And just to be clear, the, the, once the nominations are made by any council member, we will take a roll call vote in order that the nominations were made. So the first nomination made, we'll do a roll call vote for that, the first, and then as soon as there's a majority vote for any individual nominee, that person will be selected for that office.
Can I make a nomination? Or can I start it?
I'm in a bus.
Councilmember Strowman has a question and then she will have to open the floor.
Apologize.
Does the general public have any input, any feedback with the nominations?
No, this is just council selection. Okay, thank you though.
With that-
I apologize, didn't mean to interrupt.
No problem.
Can I make a nomination?
Sure.
I'd like to nominate David Bellinger. I think he has the most experience with meetings up here and has a lot of contracts as far as reading contracts, he's got a wealth of knowledge with that. And I think with a very young crew up here, I think he would be the best fit for the situation.
Do you need a second? Are there any other nominations?
I would just like to piggyback on what Councilman Hagan said about Councilman Bellinger. For those of you that don't know, Councilman Bellinger is the current vice chair of SJCOG to move into the chair of San Joaquin Council of Governments in 2023. And I can't think of another, better representation for the mayor for the city of Escalon than Councilman Bellinger.
With that, we'll close nominations. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? All right. Councilmember Dave Bellinger is now mayor of Escalon.
Yeah, the switcheroo, is that what we're gonna do? Okay.
Well, thank you for the kind words, council, appreciate that. I'm honored by this appointment, very much so. It's a great thing to grow up in this town, I moved away for a little while and then came back to raise my family. Really happy to be here, happy to serve and do what I can to help this community, hoping that this new group here, I think we've got a great potential here. Looking forward to working with everybody and continuing good work here. So, thank you very much for the appointment and the honor. Thank you very much.
So the next item on the agenda is to conduct nominations and appointment process for the position of mayor pro tem. Now that we have a mayor in place, Mayor Bellinger, you can start us off by nominating somebody as mayor pro tem. And then after that, each council member also has the opportunity to nominate someone for that position as well. And then, as City Attorney Splendorio said, we would conduct a vote on each one and whoever has the majority first would be selected as mayor pro tem.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to nominate for mayor pro tem, Mr. Andy Hagan. He's been on the council for the last year in a temporary appointment. With the election results, he was the overwhelming top vote getter. So between those two items, I would like to nominate Mr. Hagan for our mayor pro tem.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations on the floor? Go ahead and take a vote.
All right, and with that, let's take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
I should probably abstain from-
Motion carries five votes.
Thank you for this privilege, I genuinely am humbled by it and I will try to do the best I can for this town. Thank you.
And then we typically do the customary change of seats, but he's already sitting in the mayor pro tem seat, so he does not have to move.
Here we go, here we go. All right, with that, we'll move to council communications then. Not sure what the order here, but we'll go with Councilman Engel, you got anything for us tonight?
Oh, well, thanks everybody for showing up. It's been quite a road to get here, so I do just want to say thank you for, for the support and for the votes that sat me here. I hope to be able to serve the city and the residents to the best of my capacity. I hope I can do you guys proud and I hope to work well with the rest of the council staff. I've done some work with you, I look forward to continuing work with those of you I haven't worked with. And happy holidays to everybody, so I don't believe we're meeting again this year, is that correct? It'll be next year?
That is correct.
Happy New Year as well and see you guys all next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move over to Councilman Strowman, what do you got for us tonight?
Oh, wow.
Do we have time? Do we need a clock?
Yes.
Okay.
For those of you who don't know, I'm not a man of few words, but tonight I kind of am. I'm very humbled to be sitting, standing, sitting up here tonight. As Councilman Engel referred to, it was definitely a process to get here, but I appreciate the confidence and the faith that the voters of the city of Escalon have in me. And I promise that I will do my best to be a good listener, to be a supporter. I under, I, most importantly, want to thank my family, my wife Shannon, my son Declan, my extended family and my, my own personal family back on the east coast. Their love and support for the last 47 years have got me to this seat and that's what has made me successful. But most importantly, thanks to the big man up there, because he's been with me every step of the way. So I really look forward to this next two years, hopefully longer than two years, but at least the next two years. I really look forward to working with you, Chief Flores, especially you Superintendent Collins, and you City Manager Romo, it's a, it's a really good feeling. Almost forgot to thank a couple other individuals real quick. I want to thank former councilman and mayor Danny Fox, former councilman Walt Merkin, councilman Gary Haskin, former planning commissioner Kurt Denzinger, and certainly last but not least, former councilman Peter Kromick, and former councilman, mayor pro tem, mayor, everybody's favorite landscaper, Robert Swift. Yeah, it's a brand new day in Escalon and I feel that the five of us will all work together for the future of Escalon, but we need your help. So, please, don't forget to come back to our meetings and we need you. So, I posted it publicly, but now I'll say it out of my words, your voice matters. Every person in this town voices, voice matters. And now the real wor, now the real work starts. So, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and look forward to working with you all in 2023.
Thank you, Sean. Councilwoman Walker, what do you have for us tonight?
Okay. Well, first, I want to say that I feel truly blessed to be up here, sitting and looking at so many familiar faces and friendly faces that are my community members out there. We've worked together a lot in the past, since I've been here. I mean, as, as a kid, young kid, we've all been working to make Escalon better and I'm excited to be up here, to be able to make a little bit more of a difference from this side of the bench, so. And, and I want to second Sean on every vote matters, every single vote, make sure you tell your kids, get out there, vote early. And then I want to thank my family and all my friends out here that have supported me in this process. I've been taking it one day at a time, just one step at a time, and that's all you have to do is just start the process. Ninety percent is just showing up, getting it done, coming in, seeing how you can help and collaborate. I also want to thank staff, staff has been fantastic in helping me in every step of the way, answering my questions, getting back very quickly, moving forward, making sure that I had all my ducks in a row. And then I want to thank you again, the community, for trusting me with this responsibility. It is huge responsibility and I do feel that. So I will be up here, I say my listening ears are on, so I want to make sure that we know that I am here, open for communication and, and ready to work together with you. And then thank you to the outgoing council, they've been so helpful in this entire process and just been very welcoming to nine candidates this time. This is just crazy, we had nine candidates for those four open spots. So they have been very helpful in getting us ready to sit up here. So I appreciate all of the help that council and, and setting, setting a precedent that we have to live up to now and watching them work hard for the city and, and I look forward to filling those big shoes that you've left for me here. And then finally, thank you to the incoming counselors and I look forward to working collaboratively with you guys and working to serve our community. So I'm, just can't express how blessed I am, so I appreciate it and everybody have a great holiday season, so.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I forgot to thank one other person.
Go for it.
And former councilman Kromick touched on this and he's not here, totally drew a blank, but I would like to publicly thank former mayor, councilman Ed Alves for his 28 years of service to this community. We all choose to live in this wonderful community for a reason and Ed really pours his heart and soul into Escalon. And so I really want to thank him publicly for all of his 28 years of service and sacrifice to our community, even though he's not here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Hagan?
I'd like to thank God for giving me the opportunity to be here, my family for always being behind me even when I maybe am a little stressed at times. I look forward to working with the council up here and hopefully creating some strategies to help our town in the various areas where we need to fix a few things. Other than that, as far as open ears and listening, for those that you know me, I'm more than open to talking to you about any kind of situation that you may have, so feel free to talk to me if you see something that you'd like to talk, to talk about. Other than that, I do want to say the parade went really well and the football team congratulates and, congratulations to them to winning state. I think that was a pretty awesome achievement, that, and hopefully the future will look very bright for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'll keep it short, hopefully. Number one, I want to thank my family, without their support, I couldn't be up here doing this. They're the reason I'm here, they're everything to me. Secondarily, I'd like to thank the outgoing council members, the past council members that all have helped guide me as well as I've talked to them in the community with different questions of how things may have worked in the past, getting their thoughts and their wisdom, I appreciate that very much. I want to thank Robert, Peter, and Andy, all for what they've done when I came on board, greatly appreciate that. To the new four members here, looking forward to what we can accomplish here, I think we have a great group here, I think we're gonna work well together and move the needle on some great things for our town. We all have the best interest at heart for our town, I think our citizens know that and we're gonna show that to you at the best of our ability. So, thank you everybody who came out tonight, we appreciate you supporting all of us here, without you, we can't do this. So, thank you again very much and we're gonna adjourn this meeting, have a good night.